This is the Commissioner meeting of August 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Okay, before I go on, I just want to state that if you notice, we have a new sound system here that was just installed. We paid for this through ARPA funds, and I just want to let the audience know that there are microphones that could pick up side conversations. This is new to us. During our new business, we're going to discuss live streaming our meetings. So hopefully you guys can hear us much better now, and we have to remember up here to hit our buttons. So it's a learning experience for us, too. Okay. Number three, moment of silence and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on July 21st, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald/Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Carney makes a motion, and a second Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? A roll call, a voice.
On the agenda, item P. Can we break that out?
It already is. If you look, it's...
A through O in D.
We already had done that, if you read it. Okay. Okay, so that's discussion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number six, proclamation certificates presentations. We have none. Number seven, we have no public hearing. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The floor is open, and the countdown will now be on the TV up there and the ones behind us. Okay. I know, fancy.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Neil Clark. As some of you know, I'm also the Mayor of Sparta, New Jersey. But tonight, I'm just talking as a Sussex County resident. So just to be clear, nothing that I say should be attributed to Sparta Town Council, Sparta Council members, or Sparta, any my capacity as a Sparta Council member. I'm calling, I'm talking to you tonight about the issue of fairness. As you know, as government officials, it's rare that we can ever get a policy that people are going to agree with, right? We're always going to have people on one side or the other. But the process by which we make those decisions is very important. We have to do it fairly. And if we can get consensus that it is fair, the public will have faith in whatever decision we make. And the law talks about how to make a fair decision, and that's where the doctrine of conflict law comes in. It wants to make sure that we, as government officials, when we make a decision, we are doing so out of the best interests of the public, that there's not some other interest that's weighing in on us. And so that's what they talk about, about various conflicts of interest. And one of them that they talk about is what's called an indirect pecuniary interest. And pecuniary is simply fancy word for financial. And the Supreme Court of New Jersey has given example of what that is. It's where the employment, if your employer could benefit from your decision, then that's an interest that the law says is an indirect pecuniary interest, and that could infect the independence of judgment. And so unfortunately, here, we have a situation where we have a sitting Commissioner who was employed by the operating engineers, and the operating engineers have expressed their support for the warehouse, one of the items that is up for your consideration tonight. And so the law looks at that, and they say, well, let's look at that interest.
One minute.
And unfortunately, in Sparta, we have had to deal with the situation where Sparta residents who simply followed a Facebook page, where that Facebook page expressed their opposition to the warehouse, that was sufficient to get them disqualified. They weren't employed by SRD, they weren't employed by the Highlands Coalition, and here we have a very more direct interest. And so I ask that do the right thing. You still will have enough people to vote, you'll still have four people to vote, you still have enough to have a majority. Don't make the unforced error of allowing someone to vote where there's an issue about a conflict of interest. And so do the right thing, ensure to the public that the process is fair, and don't give the impression that the fix is in. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Before you start the clock, please, will there be another opportunity to speak to Amendment P, item Agenda? Will this be the opportunity?
This is the opportunity, and then you could speak in public, but that would be after the vote.
Okay, so this is effectively it?
Yes.
Evening. My name is Anand Dash. I'm a resident of Sparta. I speak on behalf of any Sparta residents who are here with me tonight. I'm speaking with respect to the Diamond Chip Amendment, which is Agenda Item P on your agenda tonight. When you consider this amendment, I will ask that you please be guided by, not by your preference, not by your policy, not by your discretion or judgment, but please be guided by the sacred oaths that each of you took to uphold the rule of law and our laws of the state of New Jersey. When we look at those rules of law and the laws of our state, we find that they require that this amendment be denied. Succinctly, the reason this amendment should be denied is first and foremost, this is an amendment to the wastewater quality plan that seeks to protect public health and public safety. We can all agree, regardless of our differences of opinion, that public health and safety is the foremost interest that we should be safeguarding together. And the purpose of this plan is to do just that. And what DEP has said, when you propose a wastewater quality amendment plan, the most significant factor as part of that plan is to determine what is the proper flow from the facility that is going to be generated. If we review the long history of this application, and my colleague, Robert McBreyer, is here to help you with that, we will see this has a long history of the applicant's engineer, senior engineer, Jens Riedel, using a standard, the correct standard, to determine flow. In 2021, May of 2021, he used the correct standard to come to 10,000 gallons. That standard was subsequently used again in January of 2022. He again used the correct standard as required by the NJDEP, which is 25 gallons per day per employee. He got to 10,000 again in January of '22. Most recently, in December of 2023, when the applicant proposed their amendment revision to the amendment to NJDEP, they mistakenly and erroneously used a different standard. They used 15 gallons...
One minute.
15 gallons per day per employee. We know that standard is incorrect because the applicant's engineer has admitted that it, that is the incorrect standard to use. And that results in a material deficiency, technical deficiency, under NJDEP regulations that has a 17,000-gallon per day discharge or flow. There's a 7,000-gallon difference between the 10,000 and the 17,000. That alone is sufficient basis to deny this application. Secondly, the township of Sparta has not approved this amendment. They have decided that they didn't have enough information. This bodies and the water quality bodies' own policies require Sparta Township to first approve as a threshold matter before it can consider. Finally, I would ask that this body, as in many governments, give full faith and credit to Sparta Township that has denied this application. Please uphold the law. Thank you.
I have some copies. I don't know if you would like...
Is this on an agenda topic?
It's on the warehouse topic, yes. Apologize, I only have a few. But maybe you can share.
And then if you could state your name.
My name is David E. Widder from Hampton Township. Evening. Thanks for listening. I'm here to speak this evening concerning my opposition to the warehouse project in Sparta. You may well ask why is somebody from Hampton Township here to discuss a project that's going to be located in Sparta Township? I've heard this question any number of times from a lot of people. Why are you concerned when you live so many miles away? The truck traffic bringing goods to the proposed warehouse is going to leave behind a lot more than the goods they carry. Each of these trucks will be belching black plumes of diesel exhaust as they labor up and down the steep hills, entering and leaving Sparta. We've all seen it. Every morning, the flotilla dump trucks carrying away the Germany Flats Aquifer is a common sight to anyone who uses Route 15, leaving behind pollution for all of us to deal with. What are they depositing in the air we breathe every day? Well, diesel exhaust is a Group 1 carcinogen. The attached list, if you care to just do the whole list there, a couple of other lists, the attached list summarizes just some of the toxins that are in this: chlorine, chlorobenzene, creosol, dibutyl phthalate, ethyl benzene, naphthalene, nickel, pyrene. I could go on and on. There's a ton of higher list of carcinogens. Diesel is a Group 1 carcinogen. Some would say that these deposits are so small in quantity that it makes little difference to the health of our people. Well, let's just look at one of them. Well, the first one is nitrogen oxide. That's the creator of the gray-green clouds of smog Los Angeles is famous for. If we assume 1,000 trucks a day, doing a 30-mile round trip from the top of the Route 15 hills to the truck depot and back would leave behind 727 pounds per day. That's 265,544 pounds of nitrogen oxides a year. That's a lot of smog potential. If you want to look at something that's more insidious, particulates, using the same math, that's going to leave 11,997 pounds a year to deal with it. Some people say all those particulates are going to drift gently to the ground. Really doesn't matter because if it rains or just gravity takes it there, those little sooty particles are going to carry all the toxic pollutants out of our list one. I urge you to take the actions you can now to stop this project. It's a nightmare for Sparta, and it's not a very good bargain for the rest of the people of Sussex County who kind of like the air we breathe now. Thank you very much.
Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden. Don't forget your button. You have none? Okay, none. Okay. Commissioner Schick?
Thank you. So I had the... We have to hit the button now. Sorry about that. So I had the, just the most memorable event. I was, I attended the Veterans Luncheon BBQ that we had at the Hamburg Fire Pavilion. And for the first time in my life, outside of being enlisted, I had an opportunity to serve our veterans of this, this great county and give them thanks and show them my appreciation. It was a terrific event. I'm so used to seeing you there. Lorraine and her team did just an amazing, incredible, whatever you want to call it, it was one of the best events that I've ever been of, and it'll surely be a forever-lasting moment in my memory and my heart with Sussex County. Outside of that, I attended the Quilts of Honor Ceremony that we had at the Sussex County Fairgrounds during the fair. And because of vacation time, that's about all I had time to do this month.
Nice. I also want to say that Lorraine Hens is our deputy administrator. She's filling in for Ron Tappin tonight. And Lorraine has a dual role here in the county. She also serves as the head of senior services, and her department does so much for our veterans, and we can't thank her and her department enough. Commissioner DeGroot?
To start, I'm happy to inform everyone that we had our first meeting for our Farmland Preservation Plan update. This meeting was with a subcommittee from the Agricultural Development Board, our county engineer, myself, and the Land Conservancy. This was just the first introductory meeting, establishing the direction and schedule of the project. We are looking at having a public meeting for input on farmland preservation plan at the October 21st County Agricultural Development Board meeting, which will start at 7:30 PM. I'll remind everyone in September as well. Additionally, it was discussed to have outreach to municipalities conducting virtual meetings for convenience, and to also include town planners, administrators, mayors, council members, because participation is really critical. Understanding the direction in which a town is headed will be crucial to compromising on preservation goals and how we will end up there. As mentioned, our previous goal had us, by the year 2018, at 25,000 acres. You know, currently, we're at, you know, 19,000 around, and it's 2024. So participation, communication is really critical, and we want to, you know, create a plan that's not also in a great direction, but an achievable plan that we could actually accomplish. We do have another meeting in September, which I'll continue just to provide updates, you know, the board on. Regarding the Tri-County Agritourism Initiative for County Route 519, I've received commitments from six farms across the county in participating. To start, it was discussed with Hutterton County and Warren County to look at eight to 10 farms being included. Hutterton Counties actually had the game on this just because of their 579 trail, so they're waiting for Sussex and Warren to pick up. But rest assured, as the harvest season slows down, you know, it's a big, you know, season for the farmers right now, I'll have an additional, you know, two to four farms in hopefully next meeting. Other than that, for the Division of Health, there will be a Child Health Clinic and Adult Health Clinic Tuesday, August 27. The Child Health Clinic will be from 10 to 12, and the Adult Health Clinic will be from 2 to 4. Both will be at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road, Hamburg. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. Once again, thank you to Lorraine Hens for a wonderful job at the Veterans Picnic, to all the county workers that did an amazing job over at the fairgrounds, Bill Truwen, who had a Young Historian Award I was a part of, you know, really eventful August month, I would say. And that's it.
Commissioner Carney?
Thank you. I, if I'm not speaking loud enough, just let me know. I have a puncture of ear drum, so it's hard. Everybody can hear me all right? Good? Good. All right. Department of Engineering and Planning, Bridge Q06, Sussex County Bridge Q06, which carries Main Street, Sparta, over the Walkeville River, was closed for replacement on Monday, August 5. The actual replacement of the bridge is in the final phase of multi-phase project. During the closure, a detour is being maintained that routes traffic around the work zone by way of Town Center Drive and County Route 517, barring unforeseen issues. The county expects the bridge will be returned to service before the end of this year. Construction is being managed by the Division of Engineering. Our 2024 resurfacing program, the Division of Engineering submitted plans, specifications, and estimates for the 2024 resurfaces project to the NJDOT. Once the county receives a final review and approval by the NJDOT, the project will be open to public bidding. The project includes a repaving of 23 miles of county routes, which are estimated cost of $8.6 million. The project is funded using approximately $7 million aid from Transportation Trust Fund, TTF, with the balance from the Sussex County Capital Fund. Work includes repaving segments of County Routes 517, 519, 606, 613, 617, 623, 628, 629, 646, 650, and 656. Got that? Work could begin as soon as the fall and will extend into next spring and summer. The Division of Engineering designed a project and will be managing the construction project as well. Long Line Restriping Program, the 24 Sussex County Long Line Restriping Program is underway. The program will include the restriping of approximately 100 miles of county routes. The work is estimated at $740,000 or $7,400 per mile. Phase 1 of the project included 80 miles of road. It was completed on July 26. Phase 2 is scheduled to resume midsummer. Sussex County Office of Bridges Safety is managing that project. So as you can see, we're managing a lot of in-house projects, which is always nice to see. Bridge GO7, Sussex County Bridge GO7 carries County Route 519 over a branch of Bear Brook in Green Township. The existing bridge railing system and headwalls have reached the end of their useful service life, and work order for replacement of the rail system was issued to the county bridge crew. During the repairs, the bridge was reduced to a signal-controlled two-way signal lane. The in-house construction crew recently completed replacement of the headwall and a rail system, and the bridge was returned to full service on Friday, August 9. Tropical Storm Debbie arrived in the county this Friday, August 9. The storm brought high winds gusting between 35 and 45 miles an hour. The high winds resulted in down trees, road closures on County Route 517 in Vernon, 521 in Hampton, and 613 in Anover. Crews from both public works and the Office of Bridges Traffic Safety were activated to manage road closures and establish detours as necessary. Storm also produced rainfalls around a county of about two inches. The crews were prepared for a more significant impact from the tropical storm. Fortunately, however, the storm brought less rain and lower sustained winds than originally forecasted, resulting in minimal impacts to the transportation system. Kudos to our DPW, as always. Bridge X30, Sussex County Bridge X30 on County Route 650, also known as Decker Town Turnpike, was damaged on Monday, August 8. The damage included destruction of a bridge rail system along the southbound lane. The Office of Bridges Traffic Safety, under the direction of engineering, provided an emergency response that included installation of traffic control devices and signs reducing the bridge to a one-lane bridge. The Division of Engineering is evaluating the situation and will be developing a repair plan. And planning, a kickoff, as Commissioner DeGroot mentioned earlier, meeting was held between Division of Planning, the Land Conservancy of NJ, New Jersey, and the Sussex County Ag Development Board, beginning of the process that will update the Sussex County Comprehensive Farmland Preservation Plan. And they want to thank you, Commissioner DeGroot, for volunteering his time as a member of the working team tasked with spearheading the effort to update the plan. And in their words, "I look forward to Jack's updates as process progresses." So, good job, Commissioner DeGroot. I just want to say kudos again to Lorraine Senior Services. I feel like we say this all the time. I think I even mentioned it on Facebook. What you guys do is just second to none, as always. Even, even your crew, I don't know, Rayanne, I saw her earlier, Sheila, and everybody else who volunteers their time, getting there five, six hours prior. Just, you don't need to do that, and they do, and they show up. And it just, it means a lot to the veterans, Earl being our only veteran here. And it's an honor to serve them and give back as much as we can for their sacrifice that they gave us for our freedom. So, really, really nice job. And then the fair, so for people who've been coming to our meeting, the fair did, the opening day at the fair, which maybe was the 9th, I think the 8th was the Friday, the 9th maybe was the Saturday. The first day of the fair, which was Saturday, they did a food drive. So if people wanted to donate a dollar, as they, as they paid whatever it may cost to get in the fair, which is probably a lot, went to the food pantry, and they accumulated $446. That will go to the food pantry to benefit them. And that is all I have. Thank you.
I have to say, that was probably the worst fair weather I remember in my lifetime, but everybody made the best of it, and I still think it was a good time. 2024 Shop Right Partners in Caring hosts food drive to benefit Social Services Food Pantry. The Shop Right of Sussex will be hosting a food drive from 9 to 3 on Saturday, September 14th, 2024, in conjunction with the first Partners in Caring event at this location. Shop Right of Sussex will also be holding a passive collection during the week of Sunday, September 8. The Shop Right Partners in Caring program is a community-based hunger-fighting initiative that supports more than 2,200 charities. This year, the Sussex County Social Services Food Pantry has been chosen as the beneficiary of the collected food. Donations will help replenish the shelves at the Social Services Food Pantry to assist families and individuals in need, in addition to supporting local food pantries. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or for their family, they can stop by the Division of Social Services, located at 83 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Food or pet donations are accepted during these hours, or special arrangements can be made for after-hours donations by calling 973-383-3600. Division of Senior Services, a senior services caregiver support group meeting will be held virtually by Zoom from 2 to 3 PM on Friday, September 6, 2024. This group helps to reduce the negative effects of stress and increases the physical and psychological wellness of the caregiver. It also provides information about programs and services available to the caregiver, information on how to access these services, and provides referrals as necessary. Please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288, to obtain information or to register to attend these meetings. And I'm going to cut it brief, and that's all I'm going to have today. Okay. Okay, number 10, approval of consent agenda. There is none. Number 11, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of July 24th, 2024? Okay, Commissioner Carney with a second, from Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, number 12, there is no ordinance. Number 13, appointments and/or resignations. There are no resignations, but appointments. We have a Resolution A, which is Appointment of Caleb Orr as a General Public Representative to the Sussex County Agriculture Development Board for a term of about three years, effective immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026. And B, a resolution to appoint Christopher Cameron to the Board of Education of the Sussex County Technical School to fulfill the unexpired term of Margaret Buongiorno, said term to begin immediately and expire on October 31st, 2026. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A and B? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot makes a motion, a second. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number 14, resolutions. We have, can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A through O? Okay, Commissioner Carney makes a motion, and a second. Okay, Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution P. Should I do the motion and then, then the discussion and bring the attorney?
Yeah, I can comment when you get the discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution P? Okay, Commissioner Carney, and a second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and now discussion.
Sure. So Director, and this is in response also to Mayor Clark, but, you know, I was asked to look at the issue of whether or not Commissioner Carney has an, an actual conflict as relates to this, this item, and he does not. Some of the, the statements made by Mayor Clark, some of them are erroneous, others are just, they're unsubstantiated assumptions. First of all, and I verified with Commissioner Carney, he is not an employee of, of the International Operating, the Union of Operating Engineers 825. While he may occasionally be a subcontractor of there, some of his jobs are not union. He is not an employee, does not draw a paycheck from them. In fact, he pays dues to them, but is not a, a, an employee of that union. That's number one. Number two, and I've not...
Hold on a second. So I technically work for 825. I am not on the executive board or any such.
I understand that. Yeah. My, I understand that you do, but my understanding, what we discussed is that while you do 825 jobs, you also do non-union jobs, correct?
We're always in union shop, but we are on non-union jobs sometimes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Sometimes we're on union trade on the job, correct?
Understood. So that's number one. Number two, and even so, even if you were on the executive board of the operating engineers, it does... it doesn't change my opinion for this reason. No one has been able to produce for me anything other than support statements by 825 for a project that I haven't seen anything to indicate that they have any interest in other than a hope that it may get built. This would not be, assuming it went that far, would not be the first project that got approved, that unions, any building trades supported, that didn't ultimately get built with building trades. It happens periodically. Some of the, some of the various work is either done by union or non-union. The fact that, that 825, or the IBW, or the laborers, or the carpenters, or any of the other building trades may advocate for a project in hopes that they get work does not mean that that work is necessarily forthcoming. And I haven't seen or heard anything, and no one certainly presented anything to me to suggest that either the operating engineers own a stake in this warehouse. If somebody can produce something to the contrary, it's certainly take a look at it. Or that they already have, this is a project labor agreement that the ownership has, that suggests that it, that it has to be built with union labor, or that there is even an existing subcontracting agreement to suggest that we build with, with union labor, and specifically with union labor from 825. As a result of that, I mean, any conflict is purely speculative. It's, it's a question of personal opinions versus personal interests. And that's what the people up here get elected to, to, to do, is have opinions on topics, and then to vote on those. I don't see anything that creates a legal conflict of any kind, Director. That's my personal opinion. Obviously, Mr. Carney has the ability to, to do what he wants, but I don't see any legal impediment to him voting if he chooses to.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Bob McBreyer up to address our board. He's not going to address the public, he's going to address our board. He's the attorney that I had requested last time, and that was why we tabled it. Thank you.
Director, again, Robert McBreyer, Attorney. I serve as Special Counsel of the County's Water Quality Policy Advisory Committee. I've been asked briefly to provide somewhat of an overview of where we are with respect to that process. As this board is very well, well aware, PAC was formed to, among other things, review, evaluate, and recommend amendments to the County's Water Quality Management Plan. Over the years, this board has reviewed and opined on a number of plan amendments concerning new facilities and expansions to existing ones. The PAC board currently consists of approximately 19 representatives from your sister municipalities, and is overseen by the County's Division of Planning and Economic Development and its professionals. With respect to the pending application, Director, PAC and its professionals have satisfied their charge in completing the multi-step plan amendment process that was approved by NJDEP. PAC itself conducted three public hearings involving this application, two for review with the applicant and its professionals, and one for advisory action where it recommended this board to amend the plan. The application was subject to extended public comment and joint public hearing conducted by the NJDEP. SCUMA has recommended approval of the site-specific amendment, and the New Jersey Highlands Council issued a statement of consent finding the applicant, application consistent with the Regional Master Plan. Very importantly, we must note that DEP itself issued a determination that the proposed amendment is indeed compliant with the applicable regulatory criteria set forth in NJCA 7.15. This evening, you're considering a, a, a limited request, a request for a site-specific amendment to the plan as provided by statutes and rules applicable to wastewater service areas and wastewater treatment needs. That's the limited focus this evening. This action does not serve as a substitute for the local planning and zoning process, nor does it negate any other requirements that need to be satisfied by the applicant, such as obtaining applicable permits, approvals, and certifications required by federal, state, or municipal review agencies having jurisdiction over the proposed project. If approved this evening, the request will be forwarded to DEP for final review and action. And the plan amendments are only valid upon adoption by the NJDEP. And I could say, assertedly, that the NJDEP will have all of the available materials, documents, and public comments that were received for its final review and consideration. So, if there are any questions regarding the process of where we are, please let me know. But from my perspective, the PAC is satisfied its charge, and we are at the near end of the administrative process. So, at this point, the board has the option to approve the amendment as proposed, disapprove it, including legitimate fact-based reasons for such, or approve with minor changes that are acceptable to both DEP and the applicant, in which they now require re-notes. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. I just want to, like, I took some notes. I want to thank Mr. McBreyer for taking my phone call the other day to answer my questions. It, it was important. I just didn't feel that we were ready to vote without a statement from you on behalf of the plan. There's a process in place when adopting an amendment to the County's Water Quality Management Plan. Today's vote reflects that the petitioner has satisfied the criteria as outlined in ordinance to be granted a site-specific amendment. This is a vote on the process and does not opinion on the merits or drawbacks of this project. And after this, it, it still has to go through DEP, and it still has to go through Sparta Township. We are not up here approving a warehouse. Our opinions on whether Sparta should have a warehouse or not is not in question today. So, anyone else?
I'd like to just, pardon me with a cough. I was told a couple times I could not vote on items that were 1032-related, because I'm a member. And I understood that. I was also told that I can't vote on things that are DOT-related, even though I don't, while I work for the DOT, anything we deal with here has nothing to do with my unit. But I understand that. How, if he works, does he get to vote? When I was told, I wasn't, in fact, I got an ethics complaint put against me, and thank God, my IG's office had the letter that said, no, we told them he could cover Sussex County, just not deal with the County of Sussex on projects. I had to have a subordinate do those. So, how, I just want to know, like, for the public's, I mean, I had an ethics complaint put against me. Thank God, I had all the paperwork, it went away. How is, did he can, if he's employed, took donate, I mean, there seems to be, like, it's okay for me to get me out of the picture, but, and no offense, Chris, I mean, I got to ask this question, like, why did people do that to me, but it doesn't apply to you?
You, I want to address him. You don't, you don't abstain on every personnel thing that we have on CWA employees. And you, you vote on the road things too?
No, no, we don't vote on DOT stuff. You'll hear me abstain.
You, do you vote on CWA? Or any of our employees that are CWA? We don't separate them out.
Okay, but the DOT stuff still, I mean, I've been told.
I'm just saying, what's, what's-
I don't have an independent recollection of DOT stuff, and I'm quite sure that there's been other DOT projects that we've done. We can certainly go back and check, specifically to the CWA, though. I think the, the only time that I recall it being issues is when they were contract issues that would directly benefit you. The, the, and I come back to what I said about Mr. Carney, which is, if someone wants to come up and demonstrate to me that, that the operating engineers are a, a contract party to this transaction, then I think the opinion changes. The, the conflict argument is based-
I have to bring up what was brought to me, Doug, that's all I'm doing.
The con, the conflict argument is based purely on someone speculating that, that the operating engineers is going to end up being a subcontractor on this project. And that, it's just so spacious and distant that it's not going to rise to the level of a conflict. There's no actual conflict, and there's not even a, a potential conflict until somebody can come and demonstrate to me that there's a, a subcontract in place or that they're an owner of the project. Other than that, which is purely speculating. And I, I could come up with an argument as to why all of you guys could not vote on a myriad of items if that becomes the standard. But that's not the legal standard, though. In your instance, as I recall, again, they were related to bargaining unit and contract issues. I don't really have any recollection of anything DOT-related, but on the CWA, they were very specific items.
You done? Okay, all right. So, just my opinion, as we all have on the boards. In our resolution and consequential resolutions with SCUMA, PAC, and the previous Commissioner boards that, you know, passed through this resolution, the problem that I see is in the third and final passage of that specific resolution that we're voting on, because I'm not going to talk about a warehouse, I'm not going to be talking about administrative things like the PAC lawyer mentioned. It just says in that passage, "Be it further resolved that the proposal is supported by the Sussex County Strategic Growth Plan goals and objectives, including the expansion of job creation centers, concentrating in the development and manufacturing, industrial, and warehouse and distribution facilities that are located along highway corridors with access to rail service and benefit from a lack of residential development," and et cetera. The resolution goes on. From what I've read in our resolutions with the appropriate material, and not just one, but two agendas, I don't see the support from the Sussex County Strategic Growth Plan. As such, because specifically in Appendix A, labeled, labeled Plan Foundational Elements, on page 153, under section called Water Supply, it states, "In the Highlands Province described earlier in this report, we made the point that geology of this area is resistant, dense rock. These kinds of rock do not function well as a source of water." Additionally, further, in Appendix A, on page 163, specifically under the section called Highlands Water Quality, it states, "In conclusion, over time, new development in the Highlands will severely affect the amount of water being withdrawn from reservoirs and aquifers, while at the same time reducing the flow of water in streams and rivers that is vital to aquatic ecosystems. New pavement and impervious ser, uh, surface cover will also decrease recharge of aquifers and increase runoff into surface water, leading to poor groundwater quality and increased incidence of flooding." Those two sections within our Sussex County Strategic Growth Plan is not matching up, in my opinion. If this is what our literal Sussex County Strategic Growth Plan says about development in the Highlands region, which Sparta is a part of, which this resolution we're about to vote on is based upon, and also specifically affecting, you know, the associated aquifer, I don't see how we could vote yes on a resolution that says, literally, the proposal is supported by the Strategic County, uh, sorry, Sussex County Strategic Growth Plan, when I see it as it doesn't. So, that's really where I'm coming from.
Anyone else? Okay, so we had a motion by Commissioner Carney and a second by Commissioner Schick. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degroot?
No.
Commissioner Hayden?
No.
Number 15, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bids. Resolutions A through D. The Board of County Commissioners, the County of Sussex, has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A through D? Okay, Commissioner Carney makes a motion and a second. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Just give, I'm just going to give them a minute to leave so that it quiets down. Number 16, Financials. A, Resolution for the Payment of Bills List A, August 14, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List A? Okay, Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Degroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Okay, B, Resolution Payment?
Close that.
Oops. B, Resolution Payment of Bills List B, August 14. Yes. Okay, sorry. Sorry. Okay. B, Resolution Payment of Bills List B, August 14, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List B? Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Abstain?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number 17, Personnel. Personnel Agenda of August 21, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the Personnel Agenda? Okay, Commissioner Carney, and a second. Commissioner Degroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number 18, Administrative Report. Lorraine, do you have one?
I just want to thank everyone for supporting our veterans on Saturday for our Veterans Picnic. It was really nice to see all of our elected officials come there and support. Jill was away, so she couldn't be there, nor could Patrick, but has been there in past years numerous times. It's always good to give back, and I just want to thank all of them for coming and showing their support. I appreciate all of the support the board gives us, so does our team. It's our pleasure. I always say I have the best job in the world, and it's truly enjoyable. On a county perspective, we're all busy doing our budgets. They all need to be submitted by September 3 to begin this process, to be voted on by April of next year, so that's how long it takes. So, that's where we are department-wise within the county, getting that all submitted and ready and working hard. So, we have a thorough budget for 2025 to keep us strong.
Your report. County Council?
Thank you. I don't have anything substantive. I just, I wanted to, you can indulge me, Director, for one second, in response to a comment Commissioner Carney made, and I know it was made in jest, but it's a point I just want to drive home to all five of the Commissioners and those of you that are left in the audience. And that was about liking somebody more. Look, my advice to you guys is, has nothing to do with who I like more or who I like less. It has nothing to do with friendships or not. It is not intended to try to effect a specific result. When you guys ask me an opinion, it is the best advice I can give you under a particular set of factual circumstances, indifferent to who's asking quite candidly. And this is simply designed to try to protect you guys and the board and insulate the county whenever possible. It's literally just black and white, and I've been doing this for 30 years. I've had to tell clients that I really like, that they can't do stuff, and I've told clients that I can't stand that they can. It just kind of comes with the territory. But in this particular instance, it has nothing to do with, with personalities or personal relationships. I was asked a question, and I gave you the best answer that I can under the circumstances. I know you didn't. I know that, I just want to-
In general.
I got it.
No, I didn't say any of that. Yeah, I, I definitely understand that you're old and you're old. I apologize if it came across like, I just think in general.
Number 20, Unfinished Business. Anyone? No. Okay. 21, New Business. We have this great new system here, and we paid for it with ARPA funds. Like I said before, we're all learning to use our microphones, and we've talked in the past about doing live stream so that people can watch us from the comfort of their home, but it's not a Zoom where they can participate from home. They would be able to just watch us live instead of hearing a recording of us the next day.
That's only a few years ago.
I don't, I don't know.
They had the camera set up back there.
Yeah.
They used to do it on YouTube.
Yeah, yep. And then for some reason, it, it went away, but-
We must, must have lost the employee that had the technical ability.
Yeah, could be. Or the, the freeholders didn't want it at that point, I don't know.
COVID, COVID took effect?
And then Zooms.
And then Zooms, and then the person that was doing it. When we came back, we didn't have all of the equipment, because we were tired for a long time.
But now that we have this nice equipment, I just, if anyone has any discussion, if, how they feel about live streaming? Excuse me?
Can you in the back hear us?
Yeah, you can, so now you can hear us.
You can? All right.
Oh, nice, nice. Okay.
Yeah, no, um, yeah, I'm fully in support of it.
Yeah, it's so, again, not a Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, it's really beneficial, especially the recordings on YouTube. I mean, I sat through it where I'm just- I mean, I sat through it where I'm just looking at, you know, the faces of us, you know, on the screen, and it's kind of like, not engaging. So I know for my generation and future generations to come, I think, you know, bringing this will lead to more engagement, and there's pros. I don't see any cons, so.
I don't see any cons either, so.
Just so we're clear, I don't know if you set your monitors again here. This is not...
Just live stream.
Live stream. There will be no questions.
Nope.
No hand raising, anything like that.
Nope. Nothing. They won't, we won't see them, we won't hear them. They will hear us, which is, a lot of municipalities do it in Sussex County. So this way, 6:00 on the 2nd and the 4th Wednesday, somebody can sit in their bathrobe, in their easy chair, and watch us. So, from all over the world. So I would like to make a motion to livestream our meetings starting at our September 11 meeting, as long as the equipment is working and it's figured out. So can I get a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Commissioner Degroot, seconds. Any discussion? We already had it, and I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We should be livestreaming at our next meeting. Thank you. Okay, number 22. Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. Okay, can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Degroot makes a motion and a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The floor is open. Wow, this is a first.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Barbara Holstein, 411 Deerfield Lane, Montague. I'm coming tonight, one, to address some of the public allegations that we failed in our recall attempt against Commissioner Hayden. There was not a failure. There's a thing called statutory laws. They're very stiff. They're very complicated, and we were not able to meet the deadlines according to the statutory laws. It's not a failure. It's simply a reality. The other reality is here, that I want to just try to read from this so I can stay focused. The extent of our mission was to recall was warranted by the stiff statutory requirements of the recall process, and our mission going forward is to continue our combined effort, this is myself, Chairman Joe Balabera, and our Secretary Jean, I always say his name wrong, Ronco, to continue our combined efforts for the resignation at this point of Commissioner William Hayden as a result of learning that his claims of having served as a Navy SEAL, been in combat with Navy SEALs, had been wounded in combat missions while serving, and suffers from PTSD from those missions. An example of this is the horseback riding incident that was shared publicly on Facebook about a year or so ago. Mr. Hayden described personally to me in a one-on-one conversation that the PTSD he suffers from his combat-related injuries, the lights in the ER trigger because of the injuries that he suffered in combat, that these lights in the trauma room triggered, so a significant other had to be by his bedside to help him through these traumatic moments of PTSD related to combat injury, not related to being thrown off a horse. So that in of itself is one story. Telling me this information of what he had lived through, living through that Memorial Day, he would always tell me how he lost his comrades in combat missions. All of that are lies. They were lies to me as a friend, they were lies to me as a former friend. I want to make clear to people, I was friends with Bill Hayden, I liked Bill Hayden. Bill Hayden that I knew was somebody that I respected. He is no longer somebody I respect. You are no longer somebody I like because you lied. You lied. You lied to me and numerous other people who've put it in writing. It is not for me to understand why he lied to me and others, however, it is my right to demand your resignation along with my colleagues. Elected officials who lie to their friends and family about their nonexistent military service and then refuse to answer the numerous calls for your resignation and/or prove a DD 214. Put it out there. Put it to rest. But you won't. Just the rightful action is for you to resign because of your failure to provide a DD 214, something that every man and woman who served in the military has had. Thank you very much for your allowance for me to speak tonight.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I'm here, of course, again, tonight for the same reason. This issue is not going away. It's here. It's affecting all of us. It's affecting the county, and I believe it's affecting the Commissioner's either lack of desire or not ability to perform much of his duties. He does come to meetings now, but basically, he doesn't have a whole lot to say about anything. You other Commissioners, when I hear you speak, you talk about things you've done in the community, which I very much appreciate, and I don't get a whole lot from that. And as someone who says they are the asker of questions, I wish the asker of questions would now give us some answers that we need. This is not a joke. You can laugh all you want.
Not laugh.
Well, you can smirk, smile, whatever, all you want. It's not a joke. It's a very serious matter, and we still don't have a resolution to it, and we don't know where this is going to lead down the road. This could lead to legal actions that may be coming up, and obviously, more problems with our reputation, not only in the county but in the state. And it goes beyond that because I know that at least two members of Congress have called, had called for an investigation. So this is not going away, and obviously, you do not intend to resign, which is very shameful, and thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. Anandash, SPARTA. Just to follow up, because I didn't feel like that three-minute time period was...
Can you speak up?
Yeah, sorry. So, sorry. The, just to follow up from my earlier comments, you know, I spent so long, I probably spent 30 hours, without exaggeration, in preparation for three minutes tonight. And I have to say from my heart, I'm just disappointed. I'm not a politician, right? I just saw, what I witnessed tonight, put aside the conflict issue, I don't want to focus on that, right? And as I said to Doug, out of respect for Mr. Carney, I didn't even want to raise it in public, but I think it's the wrong decision. It doesn't have to be whether they have jobs or not. Our court, Judge Minkowitz, recently disqualified eight planning board members. They didn't have jobs with the developer. They didn't have jobs against. Anyway, but my point is, my colleague left, Mr. McBrier, folks, the standard is higher. It's a higher standard. Now, I spent so long looking at that. The DEP did not, I've spoken to the DEP, and I recognize this is hearsay. They have told us that the county cannot approve if the standards which they are approving on, if you look at the resolution, and you have your engineer here, right? Ask your engineer. Let's get it right for the people. I'm not trying to be adversarial, but if you look at how the resolution recites the 10,000 gallons per day, they were always at 10,000 gallons in '21, '22, right? And in '24, they're still at 10,000 gallons. How do they still stay at 10,000 gallons when their employee count goes to 555, right? The employee count goes from 200, they're at 10,000. It goes to 300, they're at 10,000. Then it goes to 555. How do they go there, folks? They change the factor by which they're multiplying the gallons. And NGDEP has said that is a material deficiency. Why don't we consult our engineer? Why are we just pushing it through? I mean, I respect you all, our volunteers, but you have professionals to advise you. This is considered a material technical deficiency. I understand there's people for the warehouse, against the warehouse, but I'm not asking for politics. I'm not, I was just asking in the three minutes for you to uphold the rule of law, which is required by your oath. I don't know why we got short shrift for that. I just expected better. I expected a better rigorous analysis. Politics aside, union aside, Mr. Carney aside, I just expected somebody, my colleague is no longer here, but he didn't give fair consideration. He recited the process. I have an entire binder. I spent the last month going through the process of every minute, every meeting of the PAC. Not once did they explain why, and even our planner, who's not here, Autumn Sebastian, said the correct standard is 25 gallons, and nobody looked at it. You can't sleep at night with that type of rigor, lack of rigor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I know for a fact that I did my due diligence, and I did talk to Mr. Copenall at least two times, and that's why he's here, if we didn't need him. So this is not like he just showed up and he just happens to be here. He was here in case we had questions for him, and I know that I have personally had conversations with him, and I know that Mr. Carney has, because we had them during our agenda meeting, and I've been reading things, and that's why I had tabled it at the last meeting, because I wanted to make sure that I had what I needed to vote on this and that it was in compliance.
I appreciate that.
And I believe it's in compliance, and it'll go to the DEP, and it still has to go through SPARTA, so that's my stance.
I know you're very passionate, and that's fine.
I know, and I appreciate, I appreciate. I just, you know, with the lawyer in me, would like
an answer why they're using, and maybe I'll have an off-record discussion with Bill.
Right.
But I just asked, you know, I'm not a politician. I'm a lawyer, and I just, I know you did your due diligence.
Right, I did, yes. And I'm sure that the other board members, even just by their comments, you know, even though we had our own different separate conversations, did their due diligence too.
I spoke to DEP, and I know it's, it would be otherwise hearsay, and they have told me, I spoke to the case manager, Gabriel Mahon, right? He's the case manager. And I spoke to Maggie, Maggie, who's the responsible. She said they should have received the TWA. This was an engineering oversight.
We'll go to the DEP. Did you want to comment, Doug?
Yeah, Mr. Dash, if you're online. So first of all, you were a gentleman in the hallway when we chatted before the meeting. You're a gentleman again now, so, and lawyer to lawyer, I certainly appreciate that. I do want, I'm familiar with the Diamond Chips, SPARTA Township Planning Board decision that you're talking about and the eight members on the Facebook post, but I think they're distinguishable on their face and their facts for one very discerning reason, and that is, those eight board members, you know, took an oath and joined a board where they're the ultimate arbiters of whether or not an application conforms with the township's zoning and whether the site plan is consistent with the township's master plan, yet they joined a Facebook group to indicate that they wouldn't be, I think that's the basis of Judge Minkowitz's decision, couldn't be objective because they joined a Facebook, whatever you want to call it, sorry, wrong generation.
Yeah, that's okay, Facebook group.
But a Facebook site, whatever, that's in opposition to the very thing that they were supposed to be, supposed to deliberate and be neutral on. And I think that's why.
I understand.
And that's distinguishable from this situation for all the reasons that I said. That's number one. And then secondly, you also have to understand the very limited, and the attorney for the PAC did a good job of describing it, the very limited scope of what this body was, is tasked with deciding. And while I understand where Commissioner, the group was coming from, I understand where Commissioner Hayden is coming from, but, you know, they're simply voting on whether or not in their personal, in their professional opinions, their personal opinions, whether or not the application is consistent with the county water quality management plan, and more specifically, whether there are any legitimate fact-based reasons to deny it. You heard Commissioner Degroot raise his issues, and, you know, we listened to the attorney, and if the majority of the board was not satisfied, they could spell out anything that would have dissuaded them from doing that simple task. That's how we ended up where we did.
Thank you. You're very gracious to give me this additional time. That I, I just, last thought, Doug, it's, our courts have it's, our courts have stated that it's not whether, I know you had said this earlier, whether there's an actual conflict, whether there is or is not, respectfully with Mr. Carney, our courts have said is not the standard. The standard is whether or not there is the potential for some type of bias, and if there's just that potential, whether or not they secure the job.
We already discussed that, so I'm going to move on, sorry.
Fair enough, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just am unclear, I think we got kind of a little derailed on the conflict, but as a public citizen who's concerned about her drinking water, aquifer in which this wastewater, exactly what we were talking about and judging here, we brought to you a fact that this was mathematically incorrect, and it may have been, I'm not trying to call out or discredit anybody's professional work, but we asked for a relook, and you didn't. Sparta asked for more information. On the DEP, we asked for hearing, they gave us that. We had 40 devices signed into that Zoom hearing on a Tuesday before Memorial Day weekend. People are really concerned, and you failed us tonight, and I wanted to know it.
Gail Just, late New Jersey. I always come and say the same thing over and over again about stolen valor, my buddy, Mr. Hayden, and he was my friend, too, when many years ago Barbara had spoken, he was my friend, too. Anyway, I do think that stolen valor has come into light again regarding the person that Harris has chosen. What's his name? Ross, thank you. He, too, has a different problem, but still involves stolen valor. So my question here tonight, again, is, you know, Hayden is still sick, and he's still coughing. COVID is going around again. Anyone?
You're not a doctor.
I said COVID is going around again. I'm going to say it a little louder. COVID is going around again. My two cousins were in California, all, excuse me, a party of eight, all in California. They all got COVID. They all got on the airplane two days later. So COVID is going around and around, and nobody's paying attention to it. I'm actually going to call the Health Department here and say that at a public meeting, anyone who coughs, or has a cold, or has a problem, whether it be sinus, lung, whatever, should wear a mask, because you have one lady in the back, she's got a mask on, maybe she does not want to get extra sick, or she's wearing it because she is sick, or she's wearing it because she doesn't want to get sick. But I'll tell you this, I don't want to get sick, I'm a cancer survivor, and that's, anyone who is on a board and you are sick, you should be made to wear a mask, and I'm going to call the Board of Health here in the county and suggest that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment one thing, you know, that I do believe people do have underlying health conditions that could cause them to cough, my husband being one with COPD, so I don't normally defend Mr. Hayden, but on this one, I'm going to have to defend Mr. Hayden, because my husband, my husband coughs all the time, and I can't get him to go back to the doctor, but it's, that's similar.
I have a Monday womenologist appointment again.
Good. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
No move.
Okay, Commissioner Carney and a second with Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. 23 reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 24 is executive session. Linda?
Resolution RE, providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 et cetera, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and, whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Number five, matters relating to the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds. Provident Bank. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved that the Board expects not to take formal.
Actually, may, may.
May, okay.
Changed my mind.
May, may take formal action after returning from executive session, except to adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the meeting to the public and go into executive session?
No move.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden makes a motion, a second, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Can I, can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
No move.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and a second from Commissioner Hayden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I have another thing I'm going to add. Can I, can I get a motion to authorize the administrator or his or her designee to negotiate for a purchase of the Provident Bank in Newton?
No move.
Okay. Motion by Deputy Director Carney and a second by Commissioner Schick.